We're gonna start out with the Erie High School fire.
Yeah, sir.
Yeah, here's your.
Here I am. So Mr. Bledsoe asked me to speak to you all about where we're at with the fire remediation at Erie High School, and so I wrote a quick executive summary just to structure my conversation. But in either regards, we had fires on 26th of May and at approximately 4:00 AM. The fire started in the C Wing in the building, in the horticulture lab, and caused a great deal of damage from direct fire damage, smoke and soot migration, as well as water damage from firefighting activities. Direct fire damage was isolated to the horticulture lab, the weld room that's next to it, and the two rooms that are above it, but there was serious damage throughout the building to require remediation work. So at the time of the fire, we decided that our goal was to have it slow open in its normal time, with the exception of a few rooms in that area, which would include horticulture, welding, and four rooms above in the C Wing in that area. And fortunately, we were able to achieve that goal. We did removal of soot and smoke damaged materials throughout the building. We removed fire damaged areas, all of the materials within the room, as well as a lot of the room itself. This included structural steel in the horticulture area and the room directly above it. Water remediation was taken care of in the machine shop, where delicate and very expensive machines are located, and that ended well. We had a satisfactory report from the main factory machines to say that they were okay. C Wing roof replacement, the insurer covered the replacement of the interior structure in that area.
Can I sit at the table?
Absolutely. We also did repair the facility utilities, which were quite extensive in the area where we had the fire. There was damage to the electrical system, all of the data wiring, domestic water distribution, natural gas service, steam heat, and the fire alarm system. The fire alarm handle was completely replaced, as well as all of the devices in the building. So the building has a very good system for, say, another fire emergency. So at this point, we have several rooms that we still need to do a bid out on, which means rebuilding those rooms that include 174, which was horticulture, 176, weld shop, 274, 276, and 278 upstairs. And we're planning on doing that in the near term. As a side note, some of the improvements still were made to the building as part of this remediation work would include new energy efficient windows in the area of the fire, new LED lighting throughout all of the corridors on A and C Wing, which is quite an improvement in the building. Improved ventilation and weld shop, that's one of our goals with this bid out work that's going to be done, which will keep the students safe from harmful welding fumes and things of that nature, so it's gonna be a good thing. All new welding machines, all of the machines were damaged by water in the room. And appropriate storage for some of our hazardous materials, like our welding bottles and things of that nature. This will also include some new air handlers and HVAC components in the area of the fit out, and AD/height sink and range in the special web room, which is room 276 above the area of the fire. And we're hoping to install a wheelchair lift in the C Wing to bring students from the vocational area up to the normal floor level of the C Wing and back down the floor. We have been engaged with Rothmeyer's partnership, as well as CJO Engineering, in developing drawings, which I brought a copy of here tonight in case anyone would like to look at them later. And they plan on posting to bid October 13th, which is the day after tomorrow. The BIU drawings were submitted today, and the advertisements will go to the paper Friday the 13th, Monday the 16th, and Monday the 23rd. Pre-bid meeting will be held at Erie High in the library on the 19th at 10:30 AM, and the bids are due October 26th at 10:30. Review of those bids, I believe we have asked for permission to have a five-day review rather than a full thirty-day review as part of this meeting tonight.
We'll be discussing that in a few minutes.
Okay, sorry. I just didn't want to set a timeline without commenting. And then, once the review is complete, of course, the board will review for approval. That could happen as early as early November, and the completion date for all of our contractors is 130 days per the BIB documents, which would set us into March. So that's about where we're at at this point. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
As part of the process to finish the work, we, although we could use the emergency provisions and order, get, receive free quotes and award each different contracts under that method, we decided because we do have some time and we would like to do the formal bid process just to make sure that we get three consistent bids for each of the areas that Erica spoke about. However, just a few things moving in, I guess, time to man what we would like to do under the responsible contractor policy that the board adopted a couple years back. There is a thirty-day public comment period between the time contractors are noted, put on notice that they are going to be awarded a bid, and when the board votes on those bids, just to give public time to comment on those contractors, we would like to reduce that to five days instead of the thirty, just to keep things moving.
Just for this project?
Just for this project, yes.
That's how this reads?
Yes, sir. If that's appropriate, this is an item that we would like to place on the agenda tonight for supplement. We have not done that yet. We wanted to get your reaction prior to putting that on the agenda.
Move on to print consultant?
Before we move on to from Erie High School Fire, I have David Miller here, who, you know, we've been aborting a lot of contracts, doing a lot of work here over the last couple months, and I thought it might be a good idea to summarize the total cost of the fire today, so Dave's gonna go ahead and do that.
Okay. So also in your, I believe Angela included in a package for you, the summary from Liberty Mutual, really wonderful, really expensive, from so far for this project. Couple categories here. The first one in that lower part under the claim summary by expenses, about $3.2 million so far really spent on the building, basically on that physical structure, anything that's physically attached to it, being the HVAC windows and things of that nature. A large bulk of that, $3.2 million, is the remediation efforts, mostly by BMS Cap. There is other things, and there's such as the roofing and other things. The bids that Erica just spoke about, that all that stuff would fall into this building category, so after those, we expect that number to really, really increase. The next category over is the business personal property column, where we have about $2.3 million, and that's basically stuff that we've purchased to put inside the building. So we've worked a lot with the inventory consultants that have been coming out here, provide them with all the cost supporting data and everything we've done with that, so about $2.3 million of contents put into the building so far. And the last category that actually has dollars in it, very small amounts though, $50,000 in total, that's what they consider the coverage extension, what we see in there is the locker contents and the mobile classrooms that were rented and put it out, put it on the premises also, so very small dollar amounts in aggregate in total. So right now, we're nearing $6 million in claim in total, but a large portion of that is that we're going to see going out here as related to the finalization of those rooms that Erica just discussed.
Just a question, the locker property, that's all take care of, the people that had property, were there any discrepancies or anything?
Yeah, I've gotten, I'd say probably, I'd say, I'm gonna guess probably about seven people have been fired, maybe because they didn't think the cash value that they got was good, that was set by the inventory consultants, so I'm gonna forward, as I could get a good amount of those, I'm gonna pile them together, forward them off to the insurance adjuster to see if they would increase that cash value for them. We got, there was one student that said that there was something in their locker that wasn't on their inventory list, and we're gonna look into that also. Waiting until we compile a bunch of those before we dig into those. We're also notified there was one student that had a separate locker that they weren't officially assigned to, but they had stuff in it, so we looked at that today, so we'll probably be sending out a check to reimburse them for that. So a large chunk of that has gone out, and we've received, I'd say, ten inquiries of the most of that so far of the 250 some checks that we sent out just last week.
How many more kids gonna tell you about second lockers that don't belong?
Yeah, that's a great question. I wish I knew that answer.
Yeah, set a precedent.
So yeah, so we're looking at all those on an individual, like case by case basis, before we do actually cut a check or send anything off to the insurance adjuster again, but we're working with what we can.
Twelve years of life, two lockers.
So that's really it there for the summary of the, really, the financial end of the building. Any questions on that? So I just wish for permission, Frank, to move on to the next agenda item.
Mr. President, if I may interrupt for a moment, I know the senator's on a tight schedule. Why don't you stop that quickly?
Wasn't sure.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to say a couple things. I mean, appreciate it. I prefer to stand, I don't like to stand. I'm kind of nervous now, so I like to pace around a little bit. I mostly just wanted to stop and say hello tonight, because I haven't been communicating a little bit, and way of work, I had another function I had to go to, but I just wanted to tell everybody to keep up the good work. And the recurring money, I know everybody's kinda asking, or wondering, or probably wondering about that, recurring money is in the budget, we just gotta get it done. So we just wanna, you know, it's, we're not out of the chat, but we're really close. So hopefully, you know, this coming week, we'll have made some progress with the negotiations, and trust me, other than this group in here, I'm probably the next person that wants this to be done most, so. That's, I mean, I wish I had more concrete, something more concrete for you tonight, but the recurring money is still in there, it's still written in, and if we can just get it across the finish line, we're good, so anyway.
Thank you, we appreciate all you're doing for us.
Absolutely. I didn't come here for pats on the back, I'm just telling you, that's the status we're at right now, so just keep praying for me, and we'll try and get it done. So I gotta get going.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So the next part we're gonna talk about, we had a company come in a little, about a month ago, we've been working really with them since the springtime, to really look at our district-wide printing and copying, what we do, what we do district-wide, and see if there could be any cost savings involved in there. So I guess, a little bit of a background on this, we had pro buyers, a company come in, who specialized in really, they do a work with a lot of school districts, they gave me a list of, the only Pennsylvania one that comes off the top of my head, I believe it's Harris Corp. that they have done work with, but a lot of very large school districts, were smaller than many of them. They came in mostly out of recommendation from PFM. They didn't, PFM didn't identify them specifically, of course, but they generally just asked us some questions where it seems like if, unless this is something we aggressively like look forward in the future, having a consultant coming can really help us save some funding here. So really went through two phases of this so far, where we sent them about 12 months of spending information for the district-wide for printing and copying, and then after they had a chance to review all of that, we sort of pushed off having them come out until this school year, so they could see the buildings under our current configuration, and then it came out on September 11th and 12th this year, went into every, every school building, every non-structural building, and saw every copy machine that we have in the entire district, and got information from it. So what his findings were out of, out of the work that he's done here, was he really found that our cost per impression district-wide is 39% higher than we'd like it to be, so a pretty considerable number there. Really, a lot of that's coming from finding out that our build, the school buildings themselves really have inadequate capabilities when it comes to what their copiers, what their copiers can really do, and so because they might have inadequate capabilities from our copy machines, we spend, we maybe do a little bit too much copying and printing on higher cost devices, such as your printers that are on top of desktops and your digital duplicators. So it's shifting some of that cost, which will help us out in the future, I believe. One of the things, he spent a considerable amount of time at the print shop at Erie High, and his assessment of that was that the staff allocation that we had in the print shop and the dedicated square feet to the print shop were really adequate and satisfactory, we would recommend any changes in those, in those regards. The biggest thing that he found, and that we were pretty much well aware of before he came out here, and he's gonna help us correct this one, is that currently we use five different vendors for VC and servicing our copiers, and that really, by spreading it out so much, it really mitigates the buying power that it really has, additionally, really using our size for advantage to really save, save some costs there. So it's, basically, after those findings, where his recommendations are gonna be going forward here is that we really right-size the district's devices, where we add nine units district-wide, only downgrade three of the units that we have, but upgrading 35 of them, while 34 pretty much are gonna stay generally the same. So it really speaks volumes to having inadequate capabilities at our building level, because he feels that we really need to upgrade 35 of them while still adding more machines. Some of those upgrades that'll be included, but one color-enabled copier are gonna be at each school currently, and maybe 13 of our school buildings don't have a color-enabled copier on their site, so they rely solely on the, on the print shop for that, so we can move some of that to, to actually the building level. And then the elimination of basically the higher cost devices that we talked about before with the printers and the digital duplicators. One thing that he, that would help us implement is a online job submittal solution really for the print shop, so it would be, it would be easier for the print shop to manage jobs that come in, and would also maybe help them in turning around the print shop, or turning around the jobs to the print shop, which that would turn, we would use the print shop more often, and the print shop machines really have a lower cost per impression than the other machines we would have in the district, so more reliance on that would really end up saving money in the long run for us. And the big, the big thing, how we're really going to achieve, basically, increasing our abilities in the district while also saving money, is that we would wanna do a single district-wide fleet of copiers that goes out to one vendor, that we do a competitive RFP process, and that's really the next step in those processes we were to go forward in it. One thing I wanted to note, that last bullet point on there, is that that RFP would include that we would have one technician paid, that is one of the vendor's employees, but they would be solely dedicated to servicing the Erie School District. Because of our size and the volume we really have, we would, whoever had won this, won this contract, would end up having to hire additional technicians to service us anyway, so really be requested in that, in the RFP, that they be solely dedicated to the Erie School District. So that was something that would really help us with downtime of machines and really getting things running. Any questions on those recommendations before I go into?
The only question I do have is like, when you say, like, we have other vendors, or we have other companies that we've got contracts with, what do we have to, I mean, what's the, I mean, if we go in forward with something like this, and we have contracts with other companies, what's gonna be the cost of?
Yeah, that's something that's gonna be assessed in the next phase of it also, so if there isn't a, if it's advantageous for us to buy out of certain contracts, we'll look into that. It's possible that, that a vendor to get the, if I go to the next page here, so it looks like if we do like a five-year lease at the bottom here, you see off the right or be about a, just nearly a million dollar on a five-year lease for, for the district, so it could be possible that one vendor would find a million dollar five-year lease to be advantageous to get, so they would help us buy out from that. It might be that some of the leases are too expensive to buy out, so we would have a rolling implementation of, of a district, of a fleet, of a district-wide fleet of copiers and printers. So that's something that's gonna really be assessed in the next phase there. And this slide here kinda shows us the dollars and really how he really sees this happening. So annually, we have about 25 million impressions of the Erie School District. Current actual cost is just under $500,000. I think if someone believes that for a district our size, with the number of locations that we have, we should really be looking at bringing that cost per impression down to .012, that's where the 39%, is 39% lower than the .0198 that we have right now. So we really be able to achieve that by getting the correct mix of machines and really using the machines to the best of their abilities, too. If we are able to do that, it would bring us down to about $300,000 per year in costs, so about $200,000 in savings annually there. The sooner we can get out of the leases that we have, the sooner we can realize that, so it might take a little bit of time to get there, but after full implementation, we're looking at about $200,000 a year savings.
The other thing is, I'm sometimes suspicious about companies coming in and telling us how they're gonna save us money, and you know.
Yeah, so they, so they came highly recommended from PFM, so we're, so we're really glad to really take advantage of that, and we gave a lot of references and stuff that he's really done with other school districts in the past, very similar situation to us, and when it comes down to it, just consolidating and using the buying power that we have district-wide to really, to really take advantage of that, it's gonna be something that's very helpful.
This is something we've been talking about for a couple years since they came on, is really, because you see our leases and the spreadsheet, they're all over the place, and we, I guess our practice in the past was to spread, spread the business around to as many local vendors as possible, but again, you don't have that big buying pile. And I, you know, sleeping northeast with nine copiers, I did this out there, and was able to save about $100,000 a year, despite combining, negotiating, and going out with a big bid for all the copiers in the, in the five-year lease, so I've experienced savings as we can realize from it. You know, we've been talking, and again, if PFM also coming in recommending that we do this, it's a good move just, at least start to explore this and see if we can, can at least bid those out. And the other thing is, this, this company here is based off that they don't sell copiers, so they're not looking for a business right now, they're looking at just to make this happen, they're gonna keep our pay.
That's all I have. Thank you. Move on to any contract.
Hey, we, I'm gonna write what we'd like to add to the agenda tonight. EMTA contacted me earlier this week, as we've kind of settled out and issued all our bus passes, they, they are asking about a contract for this upcoming year, we usually approve that in August, and I think the urgency here is that they might get paid, so we, we took a look at where we are. At this point in the year, we have 2,679 bus passes that have been issued. Just as a comparison, last year was 2,785, so we're actually down about 100 bus passes compared to last year. They, the rate last year was $2.20 per hour, that's their minimum daily bus rate, and that's established by their board. That went up to 240 this year, so what we're looking at overall is an increase in the cost on the EMTA side of about $50,000 a year, but we get 8% of that in reimbursement states, so it's about a $10,000 increase overall, so we really like to recommend that we approve that tonight, and be sure so that we can't hit them, they've been very cooperative here over the last couple months helping us get organized. But I also wanna point out, you know, that the savings, we're still analyzing that, but as part of this, again, even, even though we're, you know, our cost went up a little bit on the EMTA, we were able to eliminate about 20 for student runs through this process, so the savings that we're gonna realize through this whole reconfiguration of transportation as well, we can see that.
Any questions, Eric?
Brian, command, Mr. Miller. The $2.20 an hour, did you say that was?
It's per, per student, per day.
How does that compare to retail at their level? In other words, the cost of transportation, I wanna get out of the bus, attempt to stake you on Washington.
It's the lowest daily rate they charge, so I'm not sure what their actual rates are right now.
Okay. I just have one other question, I mean, you said that our amount of bus passes went down this year from last year, I don't understand, with all, with all that we did, how did that, how did that come about?
We, well, we added on the high school side of the field and labor to increase in the walking distance to the elementary, offset some of that, so that that's where...
I just didn't, you know, it seemed I thought we were increasing, you know, the amount of passes.
That's what we estimated, too. We still think that there's still a conduct that we have not applied for bus passes, and we expect that to happen here over the next month or so.
We're still, we're still experiencing some families calling in to register for a bus pass, even though we're five weeks into this now, I just had a call up right before I left. A lot of what we're, with the feedback I'm getting from some of the parents is the weather's been good, and the older kids don't mind walking, but they are technically beyond that two miles, because they're stopping off, they're going to a friend's house, they're not in the big hurry to get home, but the weather's nice, but as the weather starts to turn more unfavorable, I think we're gonna see a take-up in the number of kids.
And you may see the difference next year, in that if people know that they're, if the other kids, they went well, and they were, everything was fine, if they decide they're gonna do it this year, they probably might have helped that.
We'd still be, with the savings that we do realize in addition paying for the four student program, we'd still like to continue to explore getting the elementary walking distance down closer to a mile, hopefully by the start of next year.
Okay, thank you. Erie High School logo.
Am I doing this or is doing this?
Either, so you wanna kick it off, and I'll get into the agreement?
Sure. So Attorney Walker has prepared a licensing agreement for the logo and mascot for Erie High School. As most of you know, when we used Jostens to create the new logo and mascot back in the spring, we were not under any obligation to print materials with any one vendor, and so through PEPs, we made the decision to purchase a good amount of apparel and, and sell it at a low cost, so we could make sure it got out there to the kids, the families. Right before the open house, there was a huge demand for people to have the new Erie High School apparel, so we made those purchases and sold them at a pretty low cost, I think, to, to families and fans. We're now out of that inventory, and so it's time to license retailers locally to sell. Mr. Harkins knows I made a stink because Wegmans was not including our gear up there at their store, and so they've since done so. The Erie Sports Store is very anxious to sell our apparel, which we're happy to do, but we do need to have a licensing agreement with them, just like the Erie Sea Wolves or any other major team, we need to keep control of our brand and also make sure that we're being compensated for use of that logo. So I asked Mr. Walker to put together an agreement that we'd like to use moving forward.
This agreement can be summarized very simply as saying it's essentially the same terms as the Wegmans vendor uses for their local high school sports apparel. It's a 7% royalty to the school district for the sale of the goods. It does license the use of the two logos that are contained on the back page of this agreement, so that they can print that on anything they want, as long as they follow up with the right paperwork with us for the remittance of the royalties. It is a year-to-year agreement to allow them to do that, and one of the things that we would, we are asking here tonight is not for school board approval of this agreement, as we anticipate there's going to be potentially multiple vendors that are going to wanna use this, but to make sure that you're okay with allowing the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the school district, as these issues may come up with the particular vendors. So Erie Sports Store is an example, we don't wanna wait a month, another month for them to get to the point where they have to bring it back to a school board, maybe after they review this and approve it. We'd like the administration to have the ability to sign these papers.
Just a question, Mr. President. Other schools, other school districts, they have these similar kind of agreements, like McDowell's, or something like that, with the similar amount of money and stuff, or is it, are we a little higher or lower, are we comparable, or?
Mr. Walker based this off the Wegmans agreement, and Wegmans particularly, because this is new to us, we kind of look to them, and they do the McDowell branding up there, so it's the same kind of agreement.
Okay, yeah, I just want to hear, I wanna be competitive.
We don't believe it's any more, we, we don't, we have no reason to believe it's any more, so.
Just inside, was it the Vikings Steelers game a couple weeks ago? I had my Erie strong shirt, and I kept on standing up like this, hoping we'd get us on TV, finally my wife said, hey dummy, it was Viking colors, so I didn't have one, but I tried.
We're not as much of a student.
No, I really, I tried.
I'm just curious, Tim, would the superintendent need our approval to act federally?
This is not technically an item that would be... This, this is not technically an item that would require board approval under the Pennsylvania school code. The school code 1949 doesn't specifically list this as something that would require your approval. It doesn't involve the spending of any money or the disposition of any assets. So, technically, it does not require a school board vote. It could, and that's why we wanted to bring it to you for your comfort level. But we thought for the ease of business and the, the speed at which business works, it would be more advantageous if you are aware of the agreement, you understood what the terms were, and you were okay with the superintendent signing that with those numbers.
I'll accept your explanation and just hope my mind stops between his discretion or authorizing him or empowering him to do that. It's, I don't know how, I'm just curious.
Thank you. Anybody having any new business? If any business, no matter, nothing, we adjourn until our next meeting at 6 o'clock.